Three o'clock, regular session of the Cleveland City Council today, Monday, August the 25th. I'll call this meeting to order and ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Bruce?
Here.
Councilman McKenzie?
Here.
Councilman Cassidy?
Here.
Councilman May?
Here.
Councilman Goff?
Here.
Councilman Webb?
Here.
Councilman Moore?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. As is our tradition, we will begin with our pledge of allegiance and invocation. Today, we have our friend, the Senior Pastor of Westwood Baptist, Dr. Steve Smart. We'll stand for the pledge and then followed by the prayer. Salute and pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Pastor?
Dear Father, it is with great joy that we're able to come before this assembly and do so offering petition to you that you would grant us guidance through your wisdom, counsel. We pray for these leaders of our city, that they will be quick to act according to the ways that your will would dictate. We thank you that we do come here under a flag that is set aside for liberty and life. And so now in our community, we pray that those virtues would be upheld through the decisions that are made in this room. Bless these men and women, I pray. Grant them wisdom, patience, humility, and a heart of service above their own needs to meet the needs of our community. We ask this for your sake and for your glory, in the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is to waive the reading of the minutes from our last regular session, which was August 11th, and that does require a motion from the council.
Mayor, I know that the City Council of the City of Cleveland waived the reading of the minutes of the regular session of the City Council held on August 11th, 2025.
That's approved, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's a proper motion, seconded by Councilman May. Any comments, questions, or additional corrections on those minutes? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Webb?
Aye.
Councilman May?
Aye.
Councilman Goff?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Aye.
Councilman Estes?
Aye.
Councilman Cassidy?
Aye.
Carrie Seven Zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. That motion passes. Item five, special presentations and public comments. We don't have any special presentations for the three o'clock. However, at one o'clock, we recognized our officer, Jordan Martin, who not only was a hero saving lives with Officer Daniel Sworzer, but Officer Martin was also the State Officer of the Year this year. And so we recognized them at the one o'clock. And our Cleveland High School partners, we recognize their grants for aviation and welding. And I'm very grateful for all of that at one. It does open the opportunity for public comments. Is there anyone here that is not here for a specific public hearing that would like to speak to the council at this time? If you'll raise your hand. Seeing none, we will go straight to item six, which is petitions and communications. Item six A is a public hearing to hear public comments concerning the approval of the fiscal year 2425 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, or CAPER, and the very capable Kathy Andrews. Welcome, Ms. Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll declare this public hearing to be open.
Thank you, Mayor. As usual, every year, we do a consolidated annual performance evaluation report and submit it to Housing and Urban Development for our CDBG program. Our fiscal year for the funding goes from July 1, 24, to June 30, 25. We also shorten that, and we call it CAPER, by the way. So this year, this past year, we received $360,241 from Housing and Urban Development for our CDBG program. We continued with our down payment assistance program with our two partner agencies, Cityfields and Habitat. We provided down payment assistance of $6,000 per qualified home buyer to 10, to 10 home buyers. Cityfields, three, and Habitat, seven. We also stacked up a couple of years of our funding for infrastructure, and we constructed a sidewalk on Central Avenue approximately 2,000 linear feet on the north and south side of the street from Railroad to Gaunt, plus the curb and gutter, and you all saw that today. Want to thank Brian Beck and Taylor Co. for their assistance with this. We also continued with our codes program. We had 567 violations, and 420 of those were resolved by the end of June 30, 25. And also our planning and admin staff, we took the lead on writing the grant for the Futsal Court that was funded in the Blath O'Field, and Taylor has been administering that program. We also took the lead, well, I partnered, we partnered with other staff and for the Brownfield work. Dustin and Tommy and I have our partnering, and we are taking the lead for the Empowerment Center. And then we're also, staff is also working with, in conjunction with the Southeast Tennessee Development District for the TDEC ARP grant for the amount of $5.3 million. And some of that is for infrastructure that we gave, we gave to Cleveland Utilities. We gave them 2.5 million for, I think, a sewer study and some water infrastructure. And the city is doing two projects, 20th and Michigan and 25th and Perilous. So we've had a busy year.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Kathy. Any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Andrews. Very grateful. And we will now open the floor. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this evaluation report as introduced by Ms. Andrews? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak in opposition to this report given today? Seeing none as well, I'll declare this public hearing to be closed. Takes us to item B, which is a public hearing to hear public comments concerning a request by multiple property owners for consideration of an ordinance to zone 22 acres of property located at Williams Street from R1 single-family residential zoning to a planned unit development zoning district. This was approved by the Planning Commission eight to one, eight to zero, with one being absent. And I'll declare this public hearing to be open. Mr. Barnell, we'll hear your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We talked about this one several weeks back concerning the undisturbed buffer on the western edge of the property up against the existing R1 subdivision. We also discussed the infrastructure improvements that were required for the development. All of that still remains within the PUD. And so unless there are specific questions about, you know, that you'd like reiterator to talk about regarding that, I think we gave a pretty good idea a couple of weeks ago about what we're dealing with here and what we've included in the PUD to remedy several situations.
Any comments or questions from the council? Mr. Barnell, could you remind us of the improvements to 20th Street specifically that you've requested for the developer to make?
Yes, I will. It's a required turn lane, a left turn lane. So going eastbound, you'll have a left turn into the site. The site access will move to Neely Circle and part of Williams Street will be abandoned. Neely Circle itself will have to be improved. That elevation of the road will actually be raised to improve the site distance, you know, needs that are, you know, when you're on Neely, turning out left or right, this will improve your vision and ability. So those are the primary things, but it's the improvement of Neely all the way back to the development to a city standard road and as well as the turn lane. Well, that'll be addressed through site review. It's what we did within the language, as it said, to be approved by our transportation engineer. It'll depend on, it depends on the number of factors, speed, the number of vehicles expected to turn. But typically, I think it can be up to 100 feet in some cases. I don't know that this one will have that much room.
How many cars across the line?
Different times, and I haven't looked at the transportation study in a minute. Yeah, it was somewhere in that ballpark. So it would need to, you know, at the busiest hours, accommodate that many.
Is it going to go up and over that hill?
Well, I think some of that remains to be seen based on, on site review, but it very well could, which, at which point, you know, there'd be great signage as you're going up to it, which might actually be better if it's at the top of the hill.
Okay. I think. You know, currently, if I'm heading east?
Yes.
You can end up in somebody's bridges right there and...
That's right, yeah.
I mean, if there's five cars stacked up trying to go home, or six.
Yes, and with the speed that people go, even though the recommended speed limit right there is 35 miles an hour.
They're going towards four line or coming off four line.
They're moving.
I catch myself speeding.
I'd say everybody does at some point. So, you know, that's something that Dave and I'll definitely pay attention through site review, because it's probably one of the more interesting situations when it comes to traffic site distance, as well as, even though the speed limit's marked one thing, we know what they're actually doing.
Councilman Cassidy, do you have a question?
Yeah, I know there's a history with this. Can you go tell us about where it started at and where it ended up at?
Sure. You know, the original submittal had units on both sides of Williams Street coming in with what was a 15-foot setback. It included, at that time, I believe, 160 units, as well as no infrastructure improvements. So through cooperation with the applicant, we started working on a buffer for the Woodchase subdivision, that 50-foot undisturbed buffer that also includes additional plantings where needed, because there's some gaps and some stormwater work that'll have to be done. Originally, the Planning Commission did vote against it, and so they had some thoughts for the applicant, as well as some things that staff provided. The applicant changed his submittal, provided that buffer, provided those infrastructure upgrades. We went back to the Planning Commission. They recommended for it, and now we're, now we're here. And it's, it's really been going on for about at least four and a half, five months. So.
All right. Any other comments? Vice Mayor Webb?
The infrastructure improvements, the developer is funding that.
That's correct. It's a requirement of the PUD that they install those before they can get their building permits going. They've got, that work needs to be done by, by the developer. Yes, yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barnell.
Thank you.
We're grateful. We'll open up the floor. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this request? Now is the public hearing opportunity. If you'll state your name for the record, please, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Patrick Howe, on behalf of Multi-Lanco, the petitioner. I'll be brief this evening. Just have not been any changes to the plan since we met last month. As indicated, it's currently zoned R1. We think we've come up with a plan that saves 64% of the green space. We're able to cluster buildings in certain areas. The height of the buildings will be the same as single-family, so we're not going any higher. We have a 50-foot undisturbed buffer adjacent to Woodchase, and the closest building to Woodchase is probably going to be 135 feet away. So we think it's a, it's a great plan. I commend the staff and Planning Commission for working with me and our traffic engineer and your traffic consultant to come up with a plan that we think is a great fit. You know, townhome product is something that I think's needed in the city, and we're thankful for your, your support this evening, and I'm open for any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will continue. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this request as presented? Seeing none, we'll open up the floor. Would anyone like to speak in opposition to this request? If you'll please state your name for the record, sir.
Franklin Chancy. Not exactly in opposition to the request. I am not here today to oppose the PUD, per se. I don't have objections about the type of housing that's being put in, or even especially about the number of them. But I do have great concerns about the traffic issues that were just referenced a moment ago. And I am a resident of the Woodchase community there, and so I have a great deal of familiarity with what's actually happening on the ground. And respectfully, I and a number of other neighbors do not feel that the traffic management for this project and for the city, to be honest, has been adequately addressed in this case. There's been rapid growth east on 20th Street, Michigan Avenue, that area out there, and the amount of traffic that's now funneling down toward the Mayfield School Zone has grown astronomically over the last five years. And that's going to continue to happen as more development takes place out there. Just as you have a obligation and a responsibility to promote growth and prosperity in the city, you've got an equal obligation to promote safety for the citizens associated with that growth. And this is where I think that this plan needs additional work. A few of the items were just referenced, but I think that they're dramatically important before the court, before the council approves this. A traffic study has been submitted by the developer, respectfully to the developer, who's clearly put a lot of work into this. I don't think that traffic study even remotely addresses the issues that we're talking about. It was mentioned that if you're traveling on a westbound direction, we have multi-lanes funneling into a single lane going down a hill right before we get to the areas that are going to be impacted by this, by this, by this PUD and this increase in traffic. Everybody who drives that road knows that people aren't driving 35 miles an hour on there. They're frequently coming into these two lanes doing 50 or more. There are going to be more accidents here as we ask people to make a difficult decision to turn left or right into traffic in one direction with limited site distance in the other. Now, the only suggestion that's been made is that we create this 50-foot long turning lane. Respectfully, that's three to four vehicles. If you're going eastbound and you're coming over those hills at rush hour traffic, if there's more than four vehicles there, and it doesn't have to happen every single time, it only has to happen once, that vehicle's not going to have anywhere to go but to be in the lane of travel, and people topping that hill are going to drive right into them. That safety concern has got to be addressed. Similarly, the traffic study that's been submitted, when you're going in the opposite direction, doesn't even begin to measure the impact on the various streets that are coming in and out of 20th Street, whether that's Joy, Carolina, Clemmer, Ball, Woodchase, Cherry, Charles. Those aren't even measured in the traffic study. You have people now that are entering 20th Street from those locations, and people who are trying to avoid 20th Street by getting off of those there. Carolina and Clemmer up there are on a hill. There are blind spots now when you make turns. You cannot see traffic coming in the other direction, and the only thing that's been done is the city's attempted to put a sign up there that says, "Be extra careful here." Well, you can't be careful for what you can't see. And all we are doing is continuing to funnel more traffic into an area that was never intended to have this much traffic going into it. It's a great thing that the city's growing. I support that, and I'm not opposing this development. But I think this, we've heard today that this gets approved, now we're going to go back and work on the traffic study and decide, well, what are we really going to do? Well, shouldn't we know that now, before you're voting on this to approve this? So respectfully, I'd ask you to take that into consideration when you're making your vote. I tendered a letter to you from former Councilman Rederman, sharing the same concerns, likewise not opposing the development, but asking the city to take some substantial steps to try to address this problem. I don't know what these traffic folks were measuring, but I can tell you there are many mornings when the traffic backs up from the Mayfield School Zone all the way up the hill and over it, and there's substantial waiting periods now. As we add this additional traffic into it, it's only going to get worse. And I'll remind the council that this is a circumstance where great expense was undertaken to make it more pedestrian and friendly, and I can tell you that lots of families are taking advantage of that, particularly during the school hour in the morning. And you're going to put them at further risk. So we beseech you to take some additional steps to address this before the traffic gets added to this area. Does the council have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Chancy?
I have a little one. Thanks, and thanks for your phone calls along the way. Would Steve Myers would put this in the notes?
Actually, we would, we would prefer that you do that. I'll provide another copy. I've got an extra. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. Chancy. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Would you like to respond?
Yeah, please.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Chancy, for your comments and your support of the project. We've gone through great lengths to adjust traffic. National Traffic Consultant on board, who's submitted two traffic studies, along with our months of tweaking this plan. And we believe, you know, we've addressed the traffic idea. We're not going back to the drawing board figuring out what we're going to do with traffic. We've done traffic counts. We have committed to a turn lane, to significant improvements on Neely Circle. We're diverting traffic in both directions. So we think we're going at great lengths to improve and fund a problem that will be there, it sounds like, if we develop this property or not. And as you know, you know, it's zoned R1. We can probably pack in over 150 homes there, which we have no interest in doing, but someone surely does. And we think with the townhome product, we have much less traffic, way fewer cars than if you packed it out with 150-plus homes and a 15-foot buffer along Woodchase. Single-car garages, a lot of, you know, retirees, single-family residences. So we think that the unit count is lower than the single-family and the vehicle count is lower. It's also very difficult to fund all these improvements with a single-family development. I mean, we're able to, you know, get this funded as one project. It'll be a 12- to 18-month project. And in that budget, in that timeline, the way it's modeled, we can, we can fund what we're proposing without any city assistance. So, you know, this is not over. We still have to submit building permit drawings and go through extensive analysis with your traffic engineer and our consultant to finalize everything, and we'll do that. And we're committed to making improvements. And last thing we want is to build something that's not safe for the residents that we would house here and the surrounding community. So rest assured, traffic will be addressed as we move forward if we get your support this evening. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who is seeking to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Seeing none, I will declare this public hearing to be closed. Takes us to item seven on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. This was discussed and presented at the one o'clock meeting by the city manager.
Mayor, I want to talk about the last, go back to the last issue.
Certainly. Mr. Fives, you're organized.
What you have in your packet, there's been a couple lines added to this on page six. I'm just going to read it and make sure. Is that, basically, it has a sentence, and this is the one that you'll be voting on, that the vegetative buffer shall be installed and approved by the Planning Director prior to the issuance of the first building permit. So basically, that makes sure the buffer's installed. On number eight, the road improvements to Neely Circle and the developers shall be in place prior to the issuance of the first building permit. During construction, all traffic must enter the site from Neely Circle. Access to the development from Williams is strictly prohibited. That's different than what's in your agenda? I don't know if, we're not saying you would disagree with any of these, is that's, that's what you'll be voting on, is to add those two restrictions of that those things have to happen before there's a first building permit. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I just don't think they have that copy.
Really?
Yeah. At least that's what our city attorneys tell me, so.
All right.
I think everything's good. Just wanted to, for the record, that...
Clarification. Any comments or questions from the council for Mr. Fives with his clarifications? That takes us back to the consent agenda, which has been presented and clarified by the city manager. The consent agenda is now on the table. It does require a motion from this council. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's a proper motion by Councilman Estes. Is there a second?
Second.
Properly seconded by Councilman Cassidy?
I'd like to speak to it for a minute.
Certainly.
Really, just about item C. I know it was passed unanimously a week ago. I wasn't here. I'm also on the Planning Commission. I'm not speaking for the Planning Commission, just for myself. I, fixing 20th Street, I see, and I said this to the Planning Commission, is the impetus is on us. We have a developer who is going to assist in that financially. 20th Street, even as is, is not safe. And we, you can have it be R1, and you can dump all those cars in there. It's on, it's on us. If it means cut the hill down, whatever it means. But I think Robert, we were very clear with Robert that this is part of the solution, and this is a bigger issue than just 22 acres and how it's getting sewn. So I just want that on our radar going forward. It's in my district. I certainly will keep keen on it. I see some school people here. More students walk to Mayfield than any of the other schools in the city. So, yeah, I'm for it. So I see it under consent. I don't need to see a reason to pull it, because we were unanimous last time. Happy to pull it if someone wants to. This falls on us and the city.
I will support what Bill said, is that that was very clear at the Planning Commission. So we're all on the same page of working on that, right, Robert?
Yes, sir.
Yes. So what Bill said was correct.
All right. We have a motion. It's a proper motion by Estes, properly seconded by Cassidy. We've had discussion by the maker of the motion. Any additional comments, questions, or concerns by the council? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Estes?
Aye.
Councilman Cassidy?
Aye.
Councilman Goff?
I'd like to recuse myself on item D, and yes, on the rest.
Councilman Webb?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Aye.
Councilman May?
Aye.
Carrie Seven Zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. That motion passes. It takes us to item eight, which is unfinished business. Item eight A is final passage of ordinance 2025-43 concerning a request by Spring Brook Community Developers LLC for consideration of ordinance to amend PUD four, located along 25th Street, to include multifamily as permitted use in the town center and business park area without a commercial component on the first floor, would allow four-story structures in the town center area and three-story structures in the business park area, and to modify parking requirements. This was approved by the Planning Commission six to zero. One passed and two were absent. The city council made a motion to approve, which failed, four, two. This is unfinished business. Item A, and does require a motion from this council.
So moved.
Second. I'd like to clarify whether your, your motion is to deny or support.
Yeah, to support.
We have a proper motion by Councilman Goff to support the final passage of ordinance 202543, and it's been properly seconded by Councilman Moore. 2025-43, and has been properly seconded by Councilman Moore, in support.
Supported, yes.
Support for the ordinance, as submitted, in final passage.
You support to, to go ahead and pass it like it originally was?
Yes, ma'am.
We are denying the original.
Supported, as it was originally presented. Presented, yeah.
All right. We have a proper motion by Goff, properly seconded by Moore.
The vote to support is a vote to allow the construction of the new buildings.
A support to vote, yes, would be saying that they could build the new buildings.
That's correct. I just want to make sure what I was going to say.
Yes, I appreciate that. It's a little confusing.
All right. Proper motion, properly seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Goff?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Webb?
No.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
No.
Councilman Estes?
Aye.
Councilman Cassidy?
No.
Councilman May?
No.
Motion fails 4-3.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Motion fails 4-3. That completes unfinished business. Takes us to item number nine, which is report from council members. We begin today with Councilman Goff.
No report today.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Webb?
No report.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moore.
No.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman McKenzie.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Estes?
Well, I've got some. I've got three somethings. Kathy, thank you for the paper stuff, and I didn't want to say something as a councilmember, but I did want to say on this backside, codes has really changed in the second district, particularly in the CDVG area. They're better in the last couple of years. I know we've found a position through this. Thank you. I mean, it's, I'm the one that gets all of those initially. I really, and I know what gets closed out, and we haven't gotten a report in a while, but I haven't had to need those reports. I used to get those monthly reports of where everything was. It is so much more efficient. We don't need those reports, and it's been great. So, thank you for that, and the attention. I think that's wonderful. Secondly, also in the second district, some of this is CDVG, some of this not, to my colleagues, please go to Blythe and look at the new footsaw board. Go tonight, it'll be covered up. Seth, we still need to go in the fences, right? But even with the turf, I think that's a game.
Jonathan, you know.
Are you the one? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Goals are on order. They're just, I'm waiting on them shipped here. They were brand-new ones. The fence is coming in this week. They're late, and saw it today around the curb to finish it all up.
So, you know, I don't care about that side, because that turf field drains so well. It is, we got just a deluge, and went out, and it was all gone.
We put some print drain. And then we, they're using our cones and the whole front.
Yeah. So, Jonathan, I'll speak to you if you're in person, Ray. Just please keep this in mind for other parts of the city. It's small, it's cheap, and it makes the neighborhood happy. Yeah, I mean, this is a real game changer. This is pickleball for others.
They're stacking a billion again today.
Good.
It's been a long.
And Seth, I know I wrote your name down here. I was told that you came up with the nomenclature, new field for, or, yeah, new fields for old field. Is that right? That's awesome. That is great wordsmithing. So, really appreciate that. And the last thing to our two chiefs, I, this is, and it's always for my colleagues as well, I mean, it's for all of Cleveland. We're going to do Great Strats Walk in March 28. We're going to do the 65 Roses, but it's going to be the last one ever. I know it's been very successful, and it's continued to have a lot of success, but it's time, after 25 years, to put it to bed. And so, I just, I wanted to announce that here. I was asked by the university to announce that here, today. We'll be going public with it soon. I'll put in the parade permit. One of the things that came up, Chief Gibson, was how much support we'd had to the police department, and it's just the personal touch of the fire department, and the families there, and the Cleveland City, the City of Cleveland employees and their families too. So we, it's a very serious decision we made, and we didn't take it lightly. And I just wanted to let you guys know publicly, thank you, and that this next year will be our last one. So, yeah, I know you're a runner, and a couple of you, many of you, participated through the years, so, yeah, we're excited to put on the last one this next year. 25 years is an amazing time to see average lifespan go from 26 years to 66 years. Seeing this community raise 1.4 million is amazing. And so, but the time's gone, that's where we are. So, just a heads up, and you'll get all that through the parade permit. I'll put all that together. Thank you, both. That's all, ma'am.
Thanks, Councilman. Councilman Cassidy?
Yes, ma'am. I've got two things. Searity, the van ran the Artic bypass out. It's more of an information for our constituents, by sort of being transparent, to know what's coming down the road. And I think it's my due diligence in that part, to make sure that the people I represent in the community understand what's coming down the road. So, I pass it out. I asked to be putting records too on that part. So, again, I don't have, I know there's a cost in doing business, and I understand that very well. But, again, as a public figure, I think that, you know, the public needs to be aware of how it's going to impact our community in that part. Second of all, I just want to take a moment. You made a comment, you know, as far as the report from the city's manager was paid from the end. Myself, too, haven't seen that that long a list. So, I just wanted to, Joe, I just want to take a moment to publicly thank you for many wonderful things that you've done over the years to improve the quality of life, and both in the citizens and staff of the City of Cleveland. Under your leadership, you've become a true leader in our state. When we went to the gun in Chattanooga, I understand, we're blessed with top-quality assets, improvement like the Ennis Street, the beautiful upgrades of Johnson Park, the additions to Greenway, and the enhancements in the roads and public safety and public works. You've also been a strong supporter and counselor, always willing to provide what we need to service our constituent dwell. I truly feel it's fortunate, on the work alongside someone like you, to understand the challenge and responsibility of public service. Someone who can navigate the ups and downs, which we've had quite a bit through that, in keeping a balanced approach to service in our community. I recognize that a part of effective leadership has a wisdom to say no, when it's of best interest to the City of Cleveland, as a vision to help shape positions and projects for long-term success. That's not an easy task, and you've done it well with integrity, professionalism, and care. So, Joe, I just wanted to thank you as a city councilman. I appreciate the hard work and dedication of your heart in our community, and I look forward to seeing more things come of well in the future. So, thank you, Joe. That's as much needed over the years I've worked with you, so I want to put that, and I just put this in the record, too.
Thanks. We're just getting started.
Yeah. That's what I was saying. Work's just beginning, so, thank you, Joe.
And every success that there is, is there's a lot of other city employees that work as a team, and the council providing the leadership, the direction, and setting the priorities is critical. It's just, everything in life is about teamwork, and we have success right now.
If somebody's calling wrong plays, we fumble the ball or have to punt it. So, at this time, it seems like we're still moving forward down the field.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we have our fair share of fumbles, but we just jump on them ourselves instead of other people getting them.
No piling on now. That's all I have, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman May?
No, I don't have anything there.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Takes us to item number 10, which is new business. Item 10A, ordinance 2025-49, amends Title 20 of the municipal code by adding a new chapter to prohibit camping or sleeping on public property within the city limits of Cleveland. It's in your packets, pages 159 through 163. This new ordinance does require a motion from this council.
So moved.
It's a proper motion by Councilman Moore. Is there a second? Properly seconded by Councilman Goff. Any additional comments, questions, or concerns from the council? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right. Councilman Estes?
So, reading that, I don't know if I should address this to Mr. Kimball, Mr. Fivas. Is this patterned on other municipalities? City of Athens? Athens. It's out there, a number of communities across the country. Yeah, I mean, I'll Google the language. Yeah. I mean, it was something that I think Athens got from someone else, and. Yeah. Has it been effective? Do we know, ma'am?
The reports from the mayor of Athens is, it has helped. Yes, sir. Positive.
I don't want to gloss that. We're also committing to transitional housing and a new shelter with the tax increase. You know, this isn't just heavy. I don't, I know we have the 15-point plan. I know we've been there on some of those points than others. And this is just a, this is a hard one for me. And it's certainly something we can walk back later. I don't think this is a catch-all that's just going to end it. We have the will to bust heads. We don't. I hope we don't. So, I. Will it help the police department, Chief?
I like the, Mr. Estes' point, what you're, you're talking about that fair balance of discretionary and how you utilize this. So, of course, any mechanism or tool that we have to have the authority to enforce laws and look into criminal activity or activities that are not law enforcement, violate ordinance is important. It's also one of the balance of finding that where you're, you have options for your homeless people, you have options that you can offer them, but if you have groups that are not compliant, that continue to be a problem, you also have some teeth to tap, some authority to enforce rules that direct them into those options. So, I think what Mr. Estes is talking about is found that fair balance of offering options and services to your homeless population, but also giving you some authority to enforce rules, whether you might be following tried all the other options. So, I think that's the way we look at it, and it will help us, because it allows us to look at each situation and determine if we can guide them to the services that they need to get themselves in a better situation, or we have to use our law enforcement authorities to try to guide them in the direction.
Councilman Estes, Vice Mayor Webb has asked for a comment.
Oh, yeah, I've got more, too, but, yeah.
Councilman Webb?
I'm good.
Just a couple of items. In reading this, and I've read it several times, issue with section 20-1502, sleeping on sidewalks, streets, alleys, or within buildings prohibited. I'm wondering if we should add the word parks in that heading? Because it's mentioned in here earlier that this is meant to deal with issues on sidewalks and parks and so forth.
And the greenway is a park.
Yes.
Any public property, right, John? It would, for, not private, but for public.
However, it would be easy on file reading to add the word parks, including the greenway, just for clarity. It's certainly a discussion.
Not private property.
So, we don't have to add it today? We can add it before the second reading? Councilman Moore, are you? Okay, Councilman Goff?
The second issue is in, oh, I'm sorry. Somebody else. Second issue is in item B, under that same heading. No person may sleep in any pedestrian or vehicular entrance to public or private property, abutting a public sidewalk. Does that limit where we could enforce this, that there has to be a sidewalk there?
That language is just straight out of what it adds.
Could we take abutting a public sidewalk out? Because there are parking lots that abut public property, that there's no sidewalk there.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have, ma'am.
Back to Councilman Estes?
So, Chief, thank you. Let me back up. Our police department is very different than it was 19 years ago when I started. On one side, very different, for the better. And not only that, I like the way you've added in, I don't know, I don't know what you say, social service officers to each shift. But I also, let me throw it to this side. I think your job is law enforcement, not homelessness. I mean, now I'm speaking to you guys. I just think police officers need to be police, and I see the public schools get caught with everything. And now, the police department's getting caught with everything that's not really their main mission. So I see this as just, I want to see, I'm going to go forward. I just want it to be part of a bigger discussion, added to our 15 initiatives, continue working on the transitional housing, continue to work with Demetrius, and have the city with spirit have the right kind of response. It's organic, it's our home. Because I, it's, if someone had the answer to this, they'd write a book and make a million dollars, and everybody would follow. There's not an answer, and it's done person by person, relationship by relationship. And we, as a city staff, are part of that relationship. I appreciate the attitude of our police officers now. I get to see it. And it's just, this is just a tough, right? I just don't want to take it lightly. Oh, we got it on books now, go on. I think this is part of a longer conversation.
All right. We've had, certainly, we have a proper motion, it's been properly seconded. We've had hearty discussion. Any additional comments, questions, or changes has been submitted? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk? I'm sorry, Mr. Fivas?
Yeah. More changes in the final reading.
So the changes today will be brought before the final reading?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And we'll work with council members to make sure.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Goff?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Webb?
Aye.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Aye.
Councilman Estes?
Aye.
Councilman Cassidy?
Aye.
Councilman May?
Aye.
Area 70.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. That motion passes. Takes us to item B, ordinance 2025-50, amends Title 3, Chapter 4, Section 3-401, 1 of the municipal code pertaining to court costs in Cleveland Municipal Court. This does require a motion from the council.
So moved.
Proper motion by Councilman May, properly seconded by Vice Mayor Webb. Any additional comments, questions, or concerns? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman May?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Webb?
Aye.
Councilman Goff?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Aye.
Councilman Estes?
Aye.